We'll call the meeting to order. First, we'll have the invocation by Councilmember Jeff Darby and the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Vince Maggio.
Let us bow and pray. Holy Father, we thank you for this day that you allowed us to see. We thank you, Father, for rest on last night. We thank you, Father, for those who are here. We thank you for those who serve this community. We ask you, Lord God, to protect them on every side. We pray for those who are hurting, those who are sad, those who are depressed. We ask you, Lord God, to heal the land in the name of Jesus. Father, we pray that you give us direction in this council meeting today to do those things that are most beneficial to those we serve. We bless your holy name in the name of Christ, I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Montgomery?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Irwin?
Here.
Mr. Darby?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Free?
Here.
Mr. Maggio?
Here.
Counsel, in accordance with Louisiana Open Meetings Law and the adopted Bossier City Council Meeting Rules Resolution, the counsel, the city council asks for order and decorum at our meetings. Please silence your cell phones. Anyone wishing to address the council on any agenda item may approach and state their name and address for the record and shall be permitted three minutes to make their comments on the particular item that's up for discussion with up to four speakers per side. All other audience members are asked to please observe the meeting quietly, and if there's a need for audience members to hold a conversation or take a phone call, you are asked to please step out of the meeting. City council-appointed sergeant-at-arms have been instructed to maintain decorum and ask anyone in violation to step out of the meeting in order to maintain orderly conduct of the meeting.
All right, counsel, we approve the minutes of the September 21st meeting.
Second.
Counsel, do you have any comments? Audience, do you have any comments about the agenda? Hey, counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Counsel, there are no additions or deletions to the agenda today, so I just needed a motion to approve it.
Like the motion to approve agenda as written?
Second.
Any questions, counsel? Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Can it pop up?
Hmm?
Can it pop up?
Yeah, yeah. That's carried.
Motion carries.
Want to read that, or?
Ceremonial matters. Mayor has appreciation for Hurricane Ida response.
Counsel, been a guest. Mayor Chandler has invited these officers here today to recognize them for their work in South Louisiana following Hurricane Ida. If y'all would step up front for me, please. On August 29th, 2021, Hurricane Ida made landfall among the Louisiana coast, causing widespread damage, power outages, and flooding to numerous southern parishes of our state. In response to this state of emergency, the Bossier City Police Department paired up with the Louisiana Sheriff's Association and sent officers to assist with rescue and recovery efforts in South Louisiana. Bossier City officers and six-man team began five-day rotations in South Louisiana on August 30th with initial, initial team. Every five days, our teams rotated out with each other, led by a sergeant, except the last team, which was led by Deputy Chief McGee. The rotation of the six-man teams continued till the last personnel came home on September 19th, 2021, after their five-day rotation. During these deployments, a total of 30 Bossier City police officers, all volunteers, were involved in the rescue and recovery efforts in South Louisiana. While in South Louisiana, our officers assisted the LaFouche Parish Sheriff's Office with patrol activities, which included directing traffic, calls for service, and providing a sense of security to the citizens affected by the storm. During the deployment, our officers remained focused and motivated on the task at hand, even though several were sleeping and their patrol vehicles had a limited supply of food during the initial phase of the rescue and recovery efforts, all while working 12- to 16-hour days. Our officers put in, our 30 officers logged more than 31,612 miles driven in response to this emergency and 1,643 hours of manpower dedicated to assisting those affected of hurricane, affected by Hurricane Ida. Mayor?
Thank you, Chief. The council and I would like to, would like to present each U.S. Certificate of Appreciation recognizing your standout leadership and exceptional service to the citizens of South Louisiana. We appreciate your willingness to leave, live the familiar and use their skills to work in chaotic and unknown environments. You guys are what set Bossier City apart from the rest. I appreciate each and one of y'all. Y'all represent Bossier City greatly. I thank y'all very much. Thank you.
Did you have told him that before he went?
Yeah, y'all stand up behind so we can all get everybody a picture.
Okay.
He's gonna take it from up there, so she'll be able to get everybody in.
Absolutely.
That's what I want. What are you trying to say?
Unfinished business. Adopting ordinance to purchase and upgrade for the water department's customer service current billing software at a cost of $47,000 to come from the Water Contingency Fund. Final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopting ordinance to fund replacement of the Coleman Street sewer main at a cost of $30,000 to come from the Sewer Contingency Fund and to enter into a contract with law or construction. Final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Counsel, any questions? Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopting ordinance to establish the Brookshire Grocery Arena region. Final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Any questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopting ordinance authorizing improving the engagement of Bingham Arbitrage Rebate Services to provide professional arbitrage rebate services to the city of Bossier City. Final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions from the council? Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopting ordinance to appropriate funds to cover construction costs for the improvements to the Bossier Arts Council Building for a total of $500,000 to come from the Hotel Motel Fund. Final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions from the council? Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopting ordinance to appropriate funds to cover construction costs for improvements to the left turn lanes located at Louisiana Highway 3 and Interstate Highway 220 for a total of $450,000 to come from the Riverboat Gaming Trust Fund. Final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions from the council? Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopting ordinance authorizing Mayor Thomas H. Chandler to execute the attached alcoholic beverage concession contract between the Bossier Civic Center and Thrifty Liquor. Final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Counsel, any questions?
I've got a question on this.
Go ahead, Mr. Montgomery.
Did, did we seek out other entities, or is this just, how was this negotiated?
As far as I know, it was sent to me. It was a renewal of the existing contract that had a three-year term that was expiring between the city and Thrifty Liquor.
Counsel, I'd like to, I'd like to make the motion to continue for two weeks, until October 19th.
I'll second that. You got that, Phyllis?
Hold on just a second, let me.
Okay.
Did I have the date right? Yeah, 19th.
It'll be October 19th. Yes, sir.
Oh, there's motion to continue. I'll second that.
Scott seconded. I did hear that.
Oh, did he? Okay, I'm sorry. Counsel, any more questions? Any questions from the audience? Please cast your vote.
Not up yet. Hang on just a second.
Okay.
Okay, now it should be up. Do y'all see it now?
Uh-uh.
Nothing showed up on your screen. Motion carries to continue. Adopting ordinance. Adopting ordinance authorizing Mayor Thomas H. Chandler to acquire property on behalf of the city of Bossier and to execute any documents and furtherance thereof for any city, state, or federal road and utility projects. Final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, counsel? Any questions from the audience? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopting ordinance authorizing the release of the full sum of $3,292,274 from the shuttered venue operators grant. Final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, counsel?
Mr. President, I have one. It's the, oh, the record sheet's here. I wanted to ask you something about the, um...
Yeah, come on up, please.
In, in this outline budget, you have $20,000 for, um, I think it's like a job fair?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Does that only include those who will be staffing the arena?
I, I didn't hear that last part. I'm sorry.
You have $20,000 in your budget for a job fair. Does that only include those who will staff the arena?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is that something that we, we couldn't incorporate maybe some city vacancies with that job fair? On that date? Is that possible?
Actually, the, from what I understand, the grant money had to be specifically spent on the venue. And we, it's, it was just to do a job fair? I don't know. I don't know the answer to that question.
Is HR here? Is HR here? HR is not here. Yeah, I was thinking, because we, we do have vacancies, so, uh, city, the city facility, and therefore, you could consider, some of the department heads could look at their vacancies and maybe incorporate trying to get some new hires at the same time you're trying to fill those staff slots at the arena. But the HR person is not here, so I don't know if we can...
I'd be happy to call and talk to them about it.
Okay.
Who, who did we deal with? Remember, you had, I believe, with Angela's help and another individual at the state level? You remember to get the, the number and all that?
Yes.
When we were applying for the grant?
Yes.
To Mr. Darby's point, I think, asking the, the organization, whatever entity issued the money, is that possible?
I'd be happy to do that.
To have that use added to the job fair?
Yes. I'll, I can find out the answer. I don't know it today, but I will let you know.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Any more questions, counsel? Thank you, Rebecca.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. New business. Adopt a zoning ordinance, first and final reading, favorable by MPC. Petitioner Julie Sullivan, JMS Bar LLC. Location 2704 Barksdale Boulevard, Bossier City, Louisiana. And they requested to amend the zoning classification from B2 limited business to B3 general business for an existing bar, and that's DeChey's Lounge.
So moved.
Colletta? I have one crazy question for you.
Is there a second?
Yeah. I've, I've made the motion. I don't know who Scott made.
I second.
Got it, second. Of course, that thing's been there a very long time. What's, what's the, what is the purpose of going to a B2, from a B2 to a B3?
So, when the ownership changed, we discovered that the bar was in a non-conforming zoning classification. Bars are only allowed in the B3 classification, so when she came for the change in ownership, we just asked her, would you mind just go ahead and then upzoning like you should? So it now makes her conforming with the ordinance.
Okay. There had to be something small.
Because usually when banks call, they ask, hey, is this conforming? If we say no, then it causes issues with financing down the line. So this just helps her in the future.
Thank you, Colletta. Any questions from the audience? Any other questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a zoning ordinance, first and final reading, favorable by MPC. Petitioner Reggie Lewis, Rayleigh and Associates. Location 7.452 acres, more or less, located at 5751 Shed Road, Bossier City, Louisiana. Request amending zoning classification from RA Residential Agriculture to B2 limited business for the existing Willis Knighton Medical Facility.
So moved.
Second.
Counsel, any questions? Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a zoning ordinance, first and final reading, favorable by MPC. Petitioner Andrew Head, H&amp;H Hospitality. Location 4600 East Texas Street, Bossier City, Louisiana. Request conditional use approval for the sale of high and low content alcohol for on-premise consumption at a restaurant, and that's Fuzzy's Taco Shop.
So moved.
Second.
Third.
Counsel, any questions? Any questions from the audience? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopting ordinance to declare that an emergency exists that affects property, public health, and safety due to the national ammunition shortage and appropriating $20,000 from the general fund fund balance to purchase ammunition for the Bossier City Police Department. First and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
I had a question on this. Angela, are you setting up a do-to, do-from so that we'll reimburse the general fund from the capital?
I think it's in the fact sheet, David, when I talked to you.
Okay, I just was making sure. I didn't have it in front of me.
No, it's in there. We'll get it set up.
Okay, that's, I just...
Phyllis, is it in the fact sheet?
Mm-hmm.
That's all. Thank you.
I think it's actually, it's actually written into the ordinance itself.
Okay.
Yeah. Counsel, any questions? Other questions? Any questions from the audience? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopting ordinance declaring that an emergency does exist in the city of Bossier City, which affects the public health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of Bossier City at the Brookshire Grocery Arena property, and allocating $1,080,000 from the shuttered venue operators grant for use to make the needed improvements, and authorizes the city to enter into a contract with Kevin Bryan Architect LLC for the completion of the, the design and construction administration work associated with this effort and providing for other matters in connection therewith. First and final reading?
So moved.
Thank you.
Counsel, any questions? Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introducing ordinance recognizing the attached list of Bossier City marshal vehicles surplus to the needs of the city of Bossier City. First reading?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, counsel? Any questions from the audience? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introducing ordinance to reappropriate $6,000 from Fund 497, the 2017 sales tax bond Innovation Drive, to contract with Neil Schaefer, Inc., to provide a speed study along Swan Lake Road between US 80 and Monica Lot Road. First reading?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, counsel? Any questions from the audience? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introducing ordinance to reappropriate $21,000 from the Fund 497, the 2017 sales tax bond. Did I just do that?
No.
Okay. It scared me. Innovation Drive to contract with Civil Design Group LLC to provide a traffic study for turn lanes located on Barksdale Boulevard to Violent Avenue. First and final, or first reading?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, counsel? Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introducing ordinance authorizing Mayor Thomas H. Chandler to execute the attached cooperative endeavor agreement between the city of Bossier City and the Louisiana Department of Treasury and the state of Louisiana. First reading?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, counsel?
Mr. President, can we get a, get a brief explanation? Someone? Ms. Williamson or attorney?
The Bossier City Fire Department received appropriation from the state for $50,000, but in order to get the money, we need to sign the cooperative endeavor agreement.
To get the money?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, counsel? Questions from the audience? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introducing ordinance authorizing the city of Bossier City, state of Louisiana, to proceed with not to exceed $125 million financing through the Louisiana Local Governmental Facilities and Community Development Authority for the purpose of refunding certain bonds of the authority and providing for other matters in connection therewith. First reading?
So moved.
Second.
Any counsel, any questions, counsel?
Yeah, I do, real quick. Excuse me. Do we, so I, I've gone back and looked, and previous years, um, in the, in the past, we haven't always gone through LCDA. Is that a requirement for doing these refunding bonds?
What do you mean, we haven't?
So, it, it, based on other ordinances from, in the past where I read, it looked like we went through, um, another third party to do these refunding bonds. I'm just curious, and it looks like at some point we switched and, and have gone through the, the direction where we're going now.
Yeah, I don't have an idea what timeframe you're talking about. I mean, we've...
So I guess, I...
I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead. Go ahead.
LCDA is a branch of the government established, I believe it's a nonprofit, but...
Right.
And we utilize them to get better placement of our bonds in the market.
Okay. Yeah, so that was...
Governmental consultants, which is Sean Toops and Charlie Sides with Stiefel and...
Huh?
Yes, it's Toops, Sean Toops.
Yeah. I didn't say that.
You did. I, I'm sorry.
Oh. Anyway, um, and Kent Snexnider with SISONG, we use them as our underwriters and municipal advisors to tell us the best way to go about marketing these, and in this case, refunding as well.
Okay. Yeah, so I guess my, my question really, I guess, boils down to, um, have we, have we maybe shopped and...
No, we don't shop this. This is a professional service.
Right.
And we believe in these people. They've been with us, I believe, going back with the previous council to '07. Is that correct?
Wow. Yeah. Yeah, I, I mean...
If you want to check the fees, their fees are all publicly disclosed, and you can go to the State Bond Commission and compare those fees charged to what the average fees are charged in the state of Louisiana.
Yes, sir. No, I'm, I'm, I'm just, certainly in my private business, I understand that cheap isn't always the best service. You, you have to find quality people. I was just curious, since we have been using these, this company since roughly 2007, if we've at least looked to see if there's another company that could at least offer the same benefits. Maybe we could save a little bit more money, maybe we can't. Just, you know, thinking about...
But certainly, it's the, um, privy to the council, if, you know, if the majority of the council wants that, I would highly recommend against that, and I would yield to the city attorney, we've used our lawyers, uh, which firm?
Bulleye and Udell.
Forever, but I'm talking about in, in regular legal, legal matters.
Correct.
Cook Yancy, I believe.
We have Weiner Wise that represents the city for general liability claim.
Yeah, in... Yeah, in different firms, and once a professional service has proven themselves, then the law allows you...
Right.
To continue those services.
Yeah, and I'm going to vote in favor of this. I was just, you know, for the future, I was wondering if we could look at making sure that we're getting, we're realizing all the savings that are out there, because I just want to make sure...
What do you mean by all the savings?
Just, just if there, if there is a professional service that could give us the same quality that we're getting currently, and...
Why would you want to risk that if they're doing an excellent job right now?
Oh, I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to risk it. I would just want to, I would just want to see, you know, what, what another service has to offer. You know. Just because something has, has worked flawlessly doesn't mean that there's not, you know, a better alternative sometimes. And so I was just, I was just wanting us to see if we could think outside the box going forward to make sure that we're saving as much money as we can.
From a fee standpoint?
Yes, sir.
Well, again, you can go to the State Bond Commission, look at what we're being charged versus the average being charged in the state of Louisiana.
Yes, sir. That's it.
Counsel, any other questions? Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introducing ordinance authorizing the issuance of not exceeding $15 million of taxable public improvement sales tax refunding bonds and not exceeding $75 million of public improvement sales tax revenue bonds of the City of Bossier City, State of Louisiana, providing for the sale of such bonds and providing for other matters in connection therewith. First reading.
So moved.
Second.
Counsel, any questions? Any questions from the audience? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of a tax auditor due to a resignation in the sales tax department. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Counsel, any questions? Questions from the audience? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of a meter reader for the customer service department. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, counsel? Any questions from the audience? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of one deputy due to a resignation in the Bossier City Marshal's office. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Excuse me, any questions, counsel? Any questions from the audience? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of a meter reader for the customer service department. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, counsel? Any questions from the audience? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of a utility worker for the lift station division in the Public Utilities Department. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Counsel, do you have any questions? Any questions from the audience? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing Amanda Nottingham in her capacity as chief administrative officer to make any and all claims for any and all unclaimed property of whatsoever nature and kind on behalf of the City of Bossier and/or its various divisions and departments. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, counsel?
Mr. President, can we get, instead of attorney, give just a brief on that one, too?
The, of course, the Secretary of State has an unclaimed property division, and apparently there are some funds, I believe, that are, belong to various departments of the City of Bossier. I know, I believe we discussed, the fire department. I think there's some other departments that have some refunds and funds, things of that nature. This would just allow Ms. Nottingham and her capacity to make, there's a process by which you have to make and verify you're the entity which is due this property, and this would allow her, they require a resolution from the entity claiming the property, to basically designate a point person that they can point back to and rely on to properly make the claim and make sure the funds are properly distributed.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution, amending Resolution 82 of 2021 to amend the legal description of the East Bank Cultural District. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Any questions from the council?
Mr. President, what is the specific change in this description? Is there a particular area?
I believe I do have the map.
There was an amendment needed at the state level. I think the asset sheet that was submitted excluded some assets that were on the map, so we had to change it so that the maps actually matched the asset sheet in order for the state to approve the cultural district. So we included some southern property all the way to the Hamilton Road. Barksdale and Hamilton were included on the cultural district map. So this will help, you know, keep us in line for the approval at the state level.
So actually, I spend the district?
Correct.
Okay, does that impact our alcohol?
It does not, not at all.
Okay.
Mr. Darby, if I may, the cultural district establishes some state tax breaks or tax credits. It does not, it does not impact any sort of collection of local sales tax or local property tax, cities' tax revenue, except for certain exemptions for, I believe they call it locally created art.
Arts, yes. Like handmade, crafted, artwork, sculptures, things of that nature.
Okay, thank you so much.
Any other questions? Questions from the audience? Thank you. Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Approve appointment of Ulysses Buddy Reed Jr. to replace Tommy Chandler as the commissioner on the Board of Commissioners for the Housing Authority of the City of Bossier City, appointment effective October 5th, 2021, and expires July 8th, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions from the council? Any questions from the audience?
Mr. President, the Pastor Reed is here, if he wanted to come up, and we appreciate the mayor for placing him on this board.
Pastor Reed, would you like to come up and say anything? And thank Mr. Chandler for his service in the past. How many years you been on the thing now?
It's been over five, six, something like that.
Yeah.
Maybe a long, time goes on, it could be 10, I don't know, it's been a long time.
He been that long.
Said to do want to thank Mayor Chandler for the opportunity of having to serve particularly following in your footsteps. So we look forward to it, and we just hope and pray that we can be of great service in these coming years.
Well, thank you for accepting, sir.
Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you, Pastor, for choosing to serve. We appreciate that, and thank you, Mayor, for selecting Pastor Reed to serve in your stead. It's a great...
Mightiest shoes to follow.
Big shoes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Approve parade permit fee waiver for National Night Out, October 5th, 2021.
So moved.
Thank you.
Any questions, counsel? Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Approve reappointment of Jeff Free as the representative for the Shreveport Bossier Sports Commission, appointment effective September 1st, 2021, and expires August 30th, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Jeff, we appreciate you serving.
Yeah.
Appreciate the opportunity.
Yes, sir. It's a good job.
It is.
Well told.
Counsel, any questions? Any questions from the audience? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introducing ordinance authorizing Mayor Thomas H. Chandler to execute the attached sponsorship guide, signed permit with DOTD listed as Exhibit A, and appropriating funds not to exceed $15,600 from the Hotel Motel Taxes Fund for replacement of signs relating to the Brookshire Grocery Arena. First reading.
So moved.
Second.
Mayor, anything you want? Explain on that.
No, sir, we've been working on these signs for a while, and I'm glad to, you know, get these things going to get the arena the signs that they want and the need for people to, you know, to guide them into then, that instead of the city tale, it's Brookshire Grocery Arena.
Yeah, we needed it, I'm glad you...
Yes, sir, and it's been tough working with the DOTD, I tell you that.
Well, and there's something that we're getting clarification on. I've spoken to Senator Peacock and haven't been able to speak with the city attorney yet, but there's some additional requirements that they have placed upon us that I'm, and not, I am not in agreement with. I don't have all the details, but there's some very egregious insurance and bond requirements, which I, you know, personally have not seen and not sure that we would want to enter into something once, you know, in perpetuity. So anyway, I wanted the council to know that I'll certainly vote to introduce this, but we've got some work to do, trying to clean this up and make it to where it's something that the Bossier City can live with.
I think I'm hearing there, you do it one time, you got it for the rest of your life, huh?
Yeah, figures. Any other questions, counsel? Questions from the audience? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of three temporary contract workers for the Public Utilities Department to be used in the lift station division. First and final reading.
Second.
Any questions, counsel? Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
Mayor, you have anything you want to bring up?
I just want to appreciate Reverend Reed for taking my spot on the Housing Authority. That means a lot, I appreciate it, you'll enjoy it. It's always good, a good group of people that work there at the Housing Authority. And I also want to thank all the council for, I appreciate all the fire, the police department that went down. There was one fireman, too, that went down for the, I had a hurricane, and they took care of a lot of people and kept people safe. And they did a lot of work moving a lot of debris out of the way for people, too, so I want to thank all of them.
Counsel, do you have any comments?
Mr. President, might want to mention National Night Out.
Yes. Next week? Not tonight.
Tonight.
If you don't know where your districts are, I'm sure Chief Estes could see how many things we have and go to him to pick them up.
The mayor's office has sent us a list, and I'll give it to you all as soon as the meeting's over.
Okay.
Of all the...
Yeah, Ms. Jeter has a little kind of parade at, you know, where she...
Every year?
Yeah.
All right. Meeting adjourned.